Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The RTM will be convened on Wednesday, December 12th, 2018, at 8:00 p.m. at the Branford Fire Headquarters, 45 North Main Street, to consider and act upon the following matters. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the judicial and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, roll call.
Okay. Hello, everyone. All right, Representative Edelman, not here. Representative Alphon. No Alphon. Representative Anderson.
Here.
Representative Black.
Here.
Representative Brockett.
Here.
Representative Comey.
Here.
Representative Conklin.
Here.
Representative DiAdamo. No DiAdamo tonight?
Nope.
Representative Doknovich.
Here.
Representative Dunbar.
Here.
Representative Everlyth here. Representative Flanagan here. Representative Gordon.
Here.
Representative Hall.
Here.
Representative Henshaw.
Here.
Representative Ingraham.
Here.
Representative Jackson.
Here.
Representative Kelly. No. Representative Lawler. Okay, Representative Leonard.
Here.
Okay. Representative Preet.
Here.
Representative Ricchio.
Here.
Representatives Tepanik.
Here.
Representative Sullivan.
Here.
Representative Turelli, not here. Representative Toohill.
Here.
Representative Walker.
Here.
And Representative Wells.
Here.
Missing six, so we saw.
You missed one.
Thank you.
Oh.
We got an exit for...
Healy.
What is it? Healy, sorry. I was working off an old list. Okay. Healy is present. And Lombardi. Must be really an old list.
Oh, we're even.
All right.
Select one. Cosgrove's here.
Ex officio. Cosgrove. Okay.
Okay, item number two, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll do that.
Representative Ingraham, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved without exception. Item number three, reception of communications reports of committees and citizens petitions. I have several here. I have one from Chairman Joe Mooney, from the Chairman of the Board of Finance. At our regular meeting, the Board of Finance held on November 26th. The following resolution was adopted, resolved, that the resolution entitled "Resolution Amending a Resolution Appropriating $2,100,000 for the Harbor Street Culvert Improvements and Authorizing the Issue of $2,100,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet and Set Appropriation and Pending the Issuance thereof of the Making of the Temporary Borrowings for Such Purposes, is hereby adopted and recommended for adoption by the representative town meeting. The purpose of this amendment is to increase the appropriation and bond authorization from $2,100,000 to $2,200,000 and to ratify, confirm, and adopt all prior authorizations and resolutions in connection thereof." I have a letter here from Representative Walker. Dear Mr. Moderator, I would like to propose that we look into the possibility of banning the purchase of sale and distribution of plastic helium balloons in the town of Branford. While my wife and I were out of state during the summer months, we did witness harness of plastic balloons, September to November, sailing by and either entrangling themselves in trees or landing in Long Island Sound where they posed a significant risk to sea birds and marine life, particularly turtles and fish. These are agents of death along with the shoreline, not to simplify horrific litter. As my understanding is, some forwarding-thinking locales like Nantucket, parts of Block Island, and Newport have banned these balloons, and quite clearly, with a sheet of plastic in the Pacific Ocean larger than the country of France, limitations upon the use and distribution of plastics will show to be growing in intensity. Please send this to the appropriated committee for action. I will send this to RNO. I have a letter here addressed to me from Representative Tom Brockett regarding public buildings, American flag, POW MIA flag. Dear Representative Flanagan, in the town of Branford, the American flag and the POW MIA flag is flown in some locations, yet only the American flag is flown in other locations. It is my view, the town should have a consistent policy, and both the American flag and the POW MIA flags shall be flown at all public locations, including schools. I would greatly appreciate you referring this appropriate entity for a resolution consistent with the contents of this correspondence. Representative Brockett, I've discussed this with Representative Ingraham, myself, and the three of us will sit down and put a resolution together on this and for our next scheduled meeting. Dear Moderator, I am writing to you on behalf of the BYO Branford and a group of Branford concerned citizens who are proposing that an ordinance be adopted by the Branford representative town meeting with the purpose to protect and improve the environment of Branford, including its coastal line and marine life, and the health, safety, and welfare of its residents by reducing the use of plastic and paper bags and encouraging the use of reusable checkout bags when making retail purchases. Our BYO Branford group has collected over 830 signatures of Branford residents over 18 years old. We also have shown an informative, interesting movie called Bag It on four occasions, and will continue to show it in various groups within the town. We have talked to Branford merchants on Main Street, West Main Street, North Main Street, Leece Island Road, and Brushy Plain Hill Plaza. Twenty merchants have publicly supported our effort, and an additional 13 agreed to put up our posters reminding shoppers to use their own reusable bags for checkout. In addition, we have designated a large cloth washable shopping bag with our logo on it one side and the Connecticut Fund for the Environmental Save the Sound on the other side. To date, we have given out 300 of these bags to residents excited about using them when shopping, and we will continue to order more to distribute. Plus, coming up soon, our committee will be collecting extra cloth shopping bags for residents and our committee members to distribute to additional residents within the cloth shopping bags. I will send this to the Rules and Ordinance Committee. And is there anybody here? I can see there's somebody here. Is there one person from the group that would like to speak to this briefly? I encourage you to go to the next RNO meeting, which will be held on December 18th, and that's when that committee will take up this proposal. Would you like to speak to this, ma'am? Come forward and speak up and state your name and address. That's your microphone right there. Yeah, you can just speak, it'll pick it up.
Okay. Yeah, officially, I'm Margaret Kilgore, known as Meg, and I am the person who wrote the letter, and here are some of the members of our committee. There are more than this, but this is the majority of them. And we've been working really hard since March to come up with this ordinance that will be sent to the Rules and Ordinance Committee. And it will be next week that we will be talking there. I mean, listening to what they say and giving feedback.
Right, that's on December 18th. What time is that, Representative Leonard?
Seven o'clock, Mr. Moderator, at Canoe Brook.
Okay, great. So, our purpose has really been to educate people in Branford about the environmental detriments of these single-use plastic bags, and what we really want people to do is bring their own reusable bags. So, we, like I said in the letter, we've distributed over 300, and I have some more to 400, and we will continue to order more and give them out to people who are interested in using them. And we haven't had too many people that refuse them. They're really nice bags. And basically, I just want to say a few things. There are stores that are very successful. In fact, one, a lot of people in town wanted to come here, but didn't work out, is Costco. Costco does not give out single-use plastic bags. The only thing you can do when you shop there, and I don't shop there because I don't have the card, but basically, you either get a cardboard box or you put things in your shopping cart, and all these is the same way. And that's a very successful store as well. And then there's also Ikea, and I did ask there, I've never seen anybody have the bag, but they have a bag that's about this big, that's thicker plastic, that you can buy for $1.89 when I asked earlier in the year. And you can buy that, but most people use the shopping cart or a dolly to take their things they buy out to the car. And then another store is basically Whole Foods. Whole Foods has a different way of approaching it. They only give out paper bags that have a high content of recycled paper. And if you bring your own bags, for each bag you bring, whether it's just to use for bulk merchandise, you know, you get it out of the bins, or whether it's for a regular checkout, you get 10 cents for each bag of your own that you bring in. And then there's, yeah, that's it. So, these are stores that everybody really likes to shop in, and no one seems to be upset that they don't have the single-use plastic bags. So, I think that's a good indication that, you know, life can go on without these single-use plastic bags. But most of them are used for 15 minutes or less, and then they are basically either go into the trash, a lot of them are put in the wrong type of trash, and they mess up, well, if it's trying to be recycled, or they go into the sky, into the drains, or something like that, and they end up in the ocean. So, there are about 2 million of them that end up in the ocean every year. And overall, there's plastic of all kinds, is most of it's only used one time, and a lot of that goes into the ocean, too. So now, every year, there's about 9 million tons of extra plastic in the ocean each year. So, it's, there are now, around the world, you know, there's the three oceans, and there are five different ocean sort of dumps for plastic and other debris, and it's about 8% of the ocean is comprised of these areas that are just trash dumps. So, it really is getting to be a serious issue. It's coming up to our attention more and more. So, even though, you know, you were bringing up the fact that about the helium balloons, that's an issue, plastic straws is an issue, there are a lot of issues, but the thing is, we have to start somewhere, and this is where we thought we would have the biggest impact from the shopping in Branford.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Representative Henshaw?
Mr. Moderator, did that correspondence include an actual proposed resolution?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to respond to Meg Kilgore. For those who may not have seen it, in the Pacific Ocean, there is a coagulated mass of plastic, which is larger than the country of France, and I think they're still trying to figure out what to do with it. But it's growing rather than shrinking, and this is a major problem in our oceans and to balance of nature. Thank you.
Yeah, that's not the only one. So, there are actually five places like that. They might not be quite as big as the one in the Pacific, but there are two in the Pacific, two in the Atlantic, and one in the Indian Ocean.
Representative Ricchio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, I just have two...
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I have two questions. Number one, can they provide us the 20 merchants that have agreed or have agreed to support this? I'm just curious. And second, who's paying for the bags that you're handing out? I'm just curious. Is that something your committee is doing? Do you have sponsors that are doing that?
The committee is doing it. The back of the bag has Connecticut Fund for the Environment Save the Sound logo on it, and they gave us a contribution to pay for some of the bags, but the rest of it is being raised in our committee.
Okay, thank you. And the only thing I would comment on is, as the committee goes through this, they should really investigate and maybe talk to our state representative, Representative Comey, what's happening at the state level. You know, is the state taking any action on a statewide ban?
Yeah.
That's what I would, make sure we don't have like a double effort here.
Yeah, the thing is, is twice, twice they have proposed a ban at the state level, and nothing ever happened. And I know the earliest ban in Connecticut was in Westport in 2008, and the people who were behind that ban are helping other communities like Branford come up with ordinances. And, you know, when someone says, "Let's go to the state," she says, "I've been saying that for quite a few years. Now it's been 10 years, and we can't wait." So, I mean, I think a state level would be best, but I think because Connecticut has so many financial issues, this would not be a priority in the state legislature right now. And also, in Massachusetts, I was looking, I've never read any of their ordinances, but on Wikipedia, it lists all of the towns, I'm trying to remember the number, I think it's 43 towns, villages, and cities in Massachusetts have a ban, and 13 were new on the list from when I looked in April at Wikipedia. So, and all of them have slightly different ordinances. And so, I'm afraid at this point in time that that's what's going to happen in Connecticut because, you know, it just isn't going to work for the state to do it at this point in time.
Representative Tepanik?
Oh, Mr. Moderator, I called the Cycling Center today, and they do an excellent job in many ways, and they recycle, we help them. This ordinance is going to have to take a lot of work because it makes, they're doing an excellent job, and our job is to help them do their job better. This ordinance doesn't seem to give any credit for what they're doing already or how we may coordinate with them. That was my only comment.
Representative Henshaw?
Just a comment on that. Apparently, the one issue with plastic bags is that they can't be put in the recycle stream because they create a real problem for the equipment that processes the plastic, and actually, it's a hazard and a liability for the workers in these plants. So, that's one of the issues, is that we can't put these in, and you're not supposed to at least be putting these plastic bags in with your recyclables because it's actually not allowed, at least in the town of Branford, it's not allowed. I know that some of those stores have recycled bins specifically for their own plastic bags, which is a good thing, but very rarely people utilize those and return their bags.
Yeah, and actually, at the transfer station, they do have a bin to take the single-use plastic bags, and now the Willoughby Wallace Library has one, too. But still, I mean, this is not taking care of all of these single-use plastic bags, and you can just look around. I mean, there's other plastic that becomes trash in the town of Branford. But, you know, if you look up at the trees, or if you go to a place like Walmart, or even Stop &amp; Shop, if there's a fence, you know, unless they cleared it recently, there's usually plastic bags that are hanging on the fence where the wind is blowing them there.
Okay, Representative Comey?
Yes, so, thank you, Representative Ricchio. Yes, I do know that there had, actually, Senator Kennedy had been a part of the state, the state's, working towards a ban up in Hartford, and the statewide ban, it didn't go through several times, but he had explained to me that, that when our, as more and more smaller communities across the state are interested in making bans, that the folks who are against it, which is a merchant association folks, actually start changing their opinion of things when the little communities start popping up and doing it their own, and then they want to be part of the solution. So, I'm hopeful that there will be some activity on that, and we don't know that yet because I'm not in office yet, but when I do find out, I will make sure to let everyone know.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for coming. Don't forget the meeting on December 18th, 7 o'clock, Canoe Brook.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance for tax exemption for handicapped equipped vehicles. Representative Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On October 16th, rules and ordinance is met once again on this proposed ordinance to create an exemption for handicapped equipped vehicles. The language that we're working on is currently before the town attorney, and because of that time for consideration, the committee voted unanimously to re-refer, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to re-refer this item. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item is re-refered. Item five, to review Branford's town dock ordinance, and if appropriate, revise time limits and rights of appeal. Representative Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On October 16th, also, the RNO committee met on a review of the town's dock ordinance, especially relative to time limits and rights of appeal, and the committee also voted unanimously to re-refer, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to re-refer this item. Any discussion on the re-referral? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item is re-refered. Item six, to consider and review and propose changes to the town of Branford noise ordinance. Representative Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On October 16th, also, RNO met on this proposed, on this review of an ordinance, and the committee also voted unanimously to re-refer, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to re-refer the item. Any discussion on the re-referral? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item is re-refered. Item seven, to consider and if appropriate, approve the 2019 meeting schedule for the All meetings will be at 8:00 p.m. at the Branford Fire Headquarters, Main Street, second floor. The dates that follow are January 9th, February 13th, March 13th, April 10th, May 14th is the budget meeting, June 12th. I did change this, there was some concern with some of the RTM members here, meeting on September 11th. They thought it might be an issue in respect of what happened, so I'm changing that date to September 10th. That will be a Tuesday. October 9th, November 13th, and December 11th. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar for 2019? Make that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Representative...
Yes.
What's the reason for moving it to the 10th?
That's 9/11. Some RTM members had a concerned meeting on that day in respect to what happened. After listening to their concerns, I decided to change the date on that. Any further discussion? Representative Sullivan?
Just a question, procedurally, since this is noticed, that would be a regular meeting still?
Yes, because it's, we're approving the calendar.
Correct. Thank you.
I have one question as well. For the November meeting, well, is that the meeting where the new term of folks will get sworn in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, no further discussion? All those in favor approving the calendar as a change, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the calendar is approved. Okay, number eight, to consider and if appropriate, approve request from the Parks and Recreation for the following budget transfer for fiscal 2019. From field renovations, $12. From court renovations, $4,350. From field fencing, $939. From field renovation, $3,086. From court renovation, $4,000. From field fencing, $9,010. For hammer field roofing, $800. From foot park roofing, $4,800. From foot park fencing, $12,700. From foot park fencing, again, $75,000, for a total of $114,697. Two, field renovation program, there's a change of the amount here, it doesn't change the total, this new amount should be $3,898. Two, court renovation program, $8,350. Two, field fencing replacement program, $9,949. And two, foot park restroom renovation for $92,500, for a total of $114,697. Representative Black?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What, this small change from what came out in our agenda is in order to keep the tax dollars on the town side and not have any tax dollars going into the foot park projects, and the monies that are coming out from the older foot park projects are being put into the foot park restroom renovations, which will bring that building up to ADA compliance as well as renovating it in general. Basically, this is just taking older capital funds from years past and bringing them into the current year with the exception of moving the foot park fencing into the restroom renovations for foot park. So, our committee heard this last week and endorsed it unanimously, five to nothing, and I put that in the form of motion for the full RTM.
Motion on the floor to approve the transfer. Any discussion? Representative Henshaw first?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just a quick question. Why, since the fencing project, Foot Park, is in the current budget, does that mean they're not going to do that part of that project, or we put aside funds for that? What's...
I guess that's no longer on their priority. It looks like they had some money previously. One of the problems with the, there's a mix of calendars here, too, so the rec department, we operate on our fiscal year, and Foot Park operates on a calendar year, and for the most part, the rec department operates on a calendar year, so I think they just had a reprioritization of what was needed in terms of trying to get the restrooms done, and they had enough to do what needed to be done with the fencing, with the funds that they had. Yeah, okay, Jamie's got some additions.
Yeah, I just add to that. He is correct, but the fencing that was for the, in their current budget, was around the tennis courts. However, further evaluating, we're really doing a further extent, you know, look at the capital improvements that we want to do at the park. We do know that in the near future, we're going to be addressing the courts themselves. We've done some, you know, repairs to them, however, we may do more of an in-depth repair, full reclaim and repair that. So, we decided to hold off on doing the fencing, obviously, until we do the full repairs. And a project that was a priority is really making those bathrooms, which is ADA compliant. So, the end of last year, when, prior to us submitting our application, we had an architect come in, do a plan for us to really put a budget number, but we didn't have those ready to go when we submitted our grant application. That came in after the fact, but, and so we did talk to the trust about now moving that project. We feel we're ready to go and get that done this spring so we could have, not only the bathrooms fully renovated, but both bathrooms fully ADA compliant.
Representative LaSalle? I'm good. You're good? Okay. Any further discussion on the transfer? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Transfer carries. Item number nine, to consider and if appropriate, approve the following budget transfer for fiscal year 2019 pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement for the Supervisors Union. From contingency, $48,543. Two, wages and salary fiscal services, $4,378. To wages and salaries planning, $5,0263. Wages and salaries assessors, $4,340. From wages and salaries engineering, $5,0466. Two, wages and salaries solid waste, $3,176. Two, wages and salaries building, $4,0214. Two, transfer out animal control, $3,030. Two, wages and salary elderly services, $4,0423. Two, wages and salaries WWL, $4,169. Two, wages and salaries recreation, $3,0289. Two, wages and salaries... and salaries WWL, $4,0169. To wages and salaries recreation, $3,0289. To wages and salaries DPW, $3,314. To wages and salaries inland wetness, $3,0481. For a total of $48,4543. And the second portion of this is retro wages from contingency, $23,984. To retro wages field services, $2,0163. To retro wages planning, $2,600. To retro wages assessor, $2,0143. To retro wages engineering, $2,0704. To retro wages solid waste, $1,0560. To retro wages building, $2,080. To transfer out animal control, $1,0496. To retro wages elderly services, $2,0184. To retro wages WWL, $2,060. To retro wages recreation, $1,00623. To retro wages DPW, $1,00644. To retro wages inland wetness, $1,727. For a total of $23,984. And some corresponding transfer animal control, increased revenue transfer in general fund, $4,0526. And increased expenditures, wages and salaries, $3,030. Retro wages animal control, $1,0496. For a total of $4,526. Representative Black?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And these are changes, or increases on all these line items due to the wage settlements that we had with the unions recently. Basically, you see, there's two groups. The $23,900 group is the prior fiscal year, so you get 2.5% and then it's roughly twice that because you're building on a base that's supposed to be 2.5% higher, but wasn't. To get to the $48,000, the animal control fund, we have a single fund with the animal control as we do with essentially the Board of Ed and as we do with the Counseling Center now. So that's why that's in the form that it is right there. So again, we heard this as a committee in ways and means last week and voted unanimously, five to nothing, to approve this. So I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to approve the transfers. Any discussion? Representative Hetchell?
Here you, Mr. Moderator. Just a quick question. Do we know where this leaves the contingency, either before or after?
Yes. The contingency is now 90, 92,000... Yeah, 9, yeah.
We got backup.
Before or after? After, all these are...
$922,329.
Any further discussion?
$922,329.
Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Transfer carries. Item 10, to consider and act upon the following proposed resolution.
Representative Toohill has noticed that there is actually a problem with changing the November 13th meeting. Unless you want to wait until...
Let's finish the call and we'll go back to that, okay? Item 10, to consider and act upon the following proposed resolution. Resolution amending a resolution appropriating $2,100,000 for Harbor Street culvert improvements and authorizing the issue of $2,100,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof and making up temporary borrowings for such purpose. The purpose of this amendment is to increase the appropriation and bond authorization from $2,100,000 to $2,200,000 and ratify, confirm, and adopt all prior authorizations and resolutions in connection therewith, and to recommend the resolution for adoption by the representative town mayor. Representative Black?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And we've got, all been given copies of the full resolution here, so first I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the full resolution.
Second, motion on the floor, and it's the second, to waive the reading of the entire resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. So this is an amendment to the bonding that we did to replace the Harbor Street culvert. As you may or may not remember, at the time that we approved this funding, the state had a freeze on all its road aid, all its transportation fund. It kind of annoyed me because we're getting stuff like the double tracking for Hartford and I-91 repairs wrapped in with little bridges. Orange did not move forward with the project. I know some of us had seen the pictures of the underside of this bridge and knew that we needed to fix it. And the nice thing about being in the financial situation that we were is we could go ahead and move forward. Now, at this point, there has been some increase in the costs. It hasn't really exceeded the original budget, but we have to put into the state for the money. And in order to do that, we have to have the proper amount of contingency based on what we've spent now, even though we're 90% through the project. It doesn't really make sense. We added one major thing to the project, which was a new sewer line, which was a $50,000 cost increase. But in order to get the contingency, make the numbers work for the state grant application, we need to increase our authorization by $100,000. We're expecting a reimbursement on this project of approximately 46% from the state. So we heard this in committee. Again, it was unanimous to recommend approval to the full RTM, so I put that in the form of a motion.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, this will still be a roll call vote.
Yes.
Representative Black?
Yes.
Representative Brockett?
Yes.
Representative Comey?
Yes.
Representative Conklin?
Yes.
Representative Doknavich?
Yes.
Representative Dunbar?
Yes.
Representative Everlyth, yes. Representative Gordon?
Yes.
Representative Hall?
Yes.
Representative Hetchell?
Yes.
Representative Ingraham?
Yes.
Representative Jackson?
Yes.
Representative Leonard?
Yes.
Representative Preet?
Yes.
Representative Rickio?
Yes.
Representative Stepanik?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
Yes.
Representative Toohill?
Yes.
Representative Walker?
Yes.
Representative Wells?
Yes.
Representative Healy?
Yes.
And Representative Lombardi?
Yes.
Okay, item carries. Representative Toohill, did you have a question on the calendar?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Wanted to bring it to your attention, the town charter says that the November meeting must take place two weeks after the election. The election is Tuesday the 5th, and so the RTM is going to have to be Tuesday the...
Tuesday the 6th. Oh, wrong here, sorry.
It's Tuesday the 5th, and therefore, two weeks later is the RTM, and that's going to be November 19th.
That's a Tuesday.
That's correct, sir.
Correct, that's correct, after an election. Okay, so, you want to make a motion to amend the calendar to reflect that, Representative Toohill?
Absolutely. Yes, Mr. Moderator, yes. Okay, so, yes, I would like to, I'd like to make the motion to, to change the calendar, so the RTM is going to be on the day of Tuesday, November 19th, 2019.
Is there a second? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries. Okay, item number 11. Any other business to come before the RTM?
Representative Sullivan? Through you, to the first selectman. I'm wondering if there's an update on the delayed schedule of completion for the community house?
Selectman Cosgrove?
Would you say?
I'm hoping 2019.
I see, I didn't even hear.
Okay, Annie?
I guess you want some further information because I was just being trying to be, in a concise manner, Representative Sullivan. So, the project is moving along. As you know, and we discussed, I believe, when you brought this up last meeting or meeting before, you know, there were some delays at the beginning of the project. There's some things that caused delays, primarily the code review of the permitting process, that delayed. And then there was some additional work that we opted to do. We had planned on, we made contingencies or allowed contingencies to do. However, as we got into the project, we opted to do those, such as replacing all of the underslabbed drain sanitary that's under that. So, while that work was being completed and designed, you know, no work could happen on that floor. Since then, that has all been completed, buttoned up. The, you know, the project is progressing now, on a pretty good clip, a good schedule. There's a lot of work that's done inside the building currently. A lot of the interior walls have been built. You see now, the, all the steel, the structural steel has been completed, even the roof done, the steel for the mechanical equipment on the roof has all been placed, penetrated through the building. That's all done. The two pieces of steel are still waiting, these curved sections of steel that will go on the canopy. So that's what's remaining as far as the structural steel element of the building. The, if you go by now, you'll see the exterior wall framing is being done, and probably by the end of this month, you'll see that framing completed as well as the insulation board being put on that. So, you know, initially, we asked for, as you may recall, a couple months ago, for an updated schedule. I believe, you know, they said, is it still going to be end of January? I believe Representative Brockett had asked that question, and I said, no, we expect it to be a few months after that. And the updated schedule right now is showing a May turnover of the building.
Thanks for the update.
Yep.
Any other item, Representative Comey?
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering, through you, Moderator, if the Harbor Street project, I heard you're pretty close to it, the bridge, very close to being finished.
Yeah, so, the, I believe they expect to start paving tomorrow.
Yeah, machines, machines are there.
Yeah, so, they were supposed to start, you know, now they're up against it. The plants are getting ready to close, but we told them they have to have it open and get the paving done. So they're ready to pave, I believe, tomorrow and Friday, where they were scheduled, to do, get that done. However, there is some guardrails and some railing that still needs to be completed before it's open for vehicular or pedestrian. So the town engineer updated me today, and he said he expects it by the end of the month for that work to be completed.
Jamie, just on that, the sidewalks, there's a fair amount of concrete that needs to be poured, or is that going to wait until it's gone now?
Yeah, they poured, you know, most of the sidewalks, if they're not all completed, they will be completed.
Okay.
When I went down there, end of last week, and poured most of it.
Okay, any other business to come before the RTM? If not, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Is there a motion to adjourn? Representative Dunbar?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.